So, good evening once again, everyone. We're out of executive session at 6:25 PM. No action to be taken at this time. So, welcome the TV viewers at home as well, seeing the back of our five heads. So, welcome to the Town of Rottlin 2019 final budget session as we prepare the five municipal budgets for the town meeting day of 2020 for the voters to vote on. So...
I think I might have been...
In no particular order. Go ahead.
Do we have copies of the budgets?
Should have a copy. There should be one in there for you, Joe, right?
Yeah, it should be in the...
All right, well, if you see. There's a highway. I didn't find it, and I looked through here very carefully.
Bill, we have some out back there? We got some here, Joe.
Okay. Now, I might have missed it, but I didn't see it.
I don't see it.
If department heads were going to talk about their budget, if they would come and sit at the cable to my right, we'll have you set up there tonight.
Two of them all together at one at a time?
I put them there one at a time, right? We have all departments except police represented due to illness, so. It's that time of year. So, if we could, in no particular order, I'd like to go to the highway budget first. Byron?
Fire.
And there is a new highway budget on your desk. It was the only one that was different from the original packet.
I'll hand it out for you. It is not pertinent to this meeting, but it will be on the next poll.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I just had it and got it done.
Okay, thank you. Ah, yes. Good, good.
So, Byron, you worked with your committee of Mary and Joe on this, correct?
Did do a little additional work today on the budget because it has bothered me some that it did go over a million dollars, and the increase appeared to be 7.7 percent. I think your sheet shows a little more than that, maybe? So, I looked at and took a hard look at paving, and without hurting ourselves, because of carryover that was generated from last year, we could take $50,000 off on that line item, and that would make that highway budget look a lot better, and it will not interfere with the paving plan that I have for this year.
So, you would go from 350 to 300?
Correct.
What's that line item number?
Is 045030.
Okay.
The fourth from the bottom?
Got it.
Yep. My recollection when we were talking about that was, well, one is, we had a question about whether we're going to be doing the school.
That is in there.
That it, that would be included in the 300,000. Okay.
That's correct.
And then we had an open question about Campbell Road, but that wouldn't be in there, and we're still now waiting to see what the city is going to do with their bond.
The only way I would be able to handle something on Campbell Road would be to pull something else out of the current list, and we're this far along in our budget process. I would be very uncomfortable with trying to work something out with the city, except for maybe another...
Well, I'll just say to that, I'm really disappointed that the city decided to postpone our meeting to January. I rescheduled that meeting three times, as some of you know, to try to accommodate different players in the city, and I thought it was frustrating that they cancel it till January because both of our budgets are going to be set by then, and so it's going to be a lot, in my opinion, a lot of talk and a lot less action if they decide to reschedule in January. I'm not going to reach out to them at this time to reschedule. They can reach out to us if they feel it's worthwhile, but I thought it was disappointing.
So, I would move to approve with the changes that Byron identified.
Should we, like, go through it?
Well, why don't we do it as part of the discussion on the motion?
Oh, all right. I'll second.
Motion by Byron, or, motion by John Paul, seconded by Mary. Now for discussion.
Okay. I did have a question on 095. Your line item cost 30,000. The worksheet that I had, that I prepared, I thought was only 10,000.
No, I had 30,000 too on the worksheet, because we had the sidewalk at the north end of town.
Yeah.
The K A JP sidewalk.
That was the $50,000 at 085.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, sorry. You're right. 085 was...
There was some reason, Byron, but I think we said...
Unless that 50,000, we think we're going to be able to move forward with the post-road sidewalk from the school to Northwood. I know we'd had discussions about that, but with, in the absence of a...
What about, are we going to need engineering services for that construction down on Ranberry Road? Is it in there for that?
We are going to need, yes. If we move forward with that waterline project, you're going to have construction oversight.
Is that what you might have been thinking about for the 30?
Wouldn't we be taking that out of the water sewer?
Of course, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, is this not necessary, this 30?
I thought we had talked about that money, Byron, because of what we thought might be our share of the, the north end sidewalk up along here by Pratiko, but...
Well, we got that in on a separate line item.
Yeah.
But I thought there, we thought there might be some engineering, because this is an engineering service, and the other one, I think, is the actual...
Construction, yeah.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Match of the grant.
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought.
I think you're right, because I had the word sidewalk written above engineering services, so I think that's, yeah.
Okay, so then leave that at...
Leave it at 30.
Anything else?
So, then that leaves us at about four point, about 5 percent increase.
So, your total, Byron, will be down by 50,000 from the 1062.
Still doesn't bring that, still doesn't bring the budget down below a million, no?
But you don't want to get to the point where you're not maintaining your infrastructure, and then you're paying bigger bucks than if you don't do it now.
That's correct.
But, and also, we're not just doing the same thing. I mean, you're expanding what we're doing if we're going to be looking at possibly two sidewalks.
Yes.
Yes.
So, we're adding a level of something here.
Just to, just to backpedal here a little on the paving, I did want to let you know that by using carryover money and, I've got a DEC grant that's going to bring $12,000 in by spring.
You have a hard time hearing this.
Little project left to do for that. I got a retrans structures grant. I'm going to get $8,000 reimbursement of that. I've got $18,000 in engineering funds in the current budget that have not been spent and won't be, because we had 30,000 for engineering on the town line road culvert, and that engineering came in at 11,000.
Okay.
So, by using all of those monies, we will still end up with roughly around 54, $55,000 carryover next July 1.
I can't hear down there.
Oh.
I'm, I'm kind of low.
Are you talking too low?
No, I'm down low, and I can't hear, because you guys are...
Okay.
Yeah, just a reminder that highway is the only budget that can carry over money from one year to the next. The others all get swept into our capital fund.
You know, we're not totally depleting the highway fund.
Yeah.
But I think we're utilizing all that we possibly can utilize out of that in accordance with what the auditors have asked us to do.
So, the only change that we were making is the 50,000 off re-treatment, Byron?
Yes.
Did you get the social security number and insurance from Kirsten?
No, that's just based on, those numbers are based on the labor money.
Okay. So, that, Bill, if you look at the screen in front of us, folks, that's live action, and that gives us the new totals. So, that would make it, to be raised by taxes, like $837,400.
Where's, where's the 175 come from? I only had 110 in there. That's our norm, our normal state aid is 110. The 175 was from last year.
We are not voting. That was what we...
That's our normal state aid.
Do we count carryover in anticipated income?
No. We did the year before. That's why we had 175. If we, if we continue with putting carryover into anticipated income, then my paving goes out the window.
The hard copy has 175, too. The hard copy has 175, too.
Yeah.
I like 110. 110's a good number.
Well, that's our normal state aid.
So, what does that do to percentage, Bill?
Well, it doesn't affect your percentage of budget, but it affects the amount raised by taxes.
By 65,000.
65,000.
But if you're going to make it work with the other numbers for paving, you've got to leave it this way.
Because last year, the amount to be raised by taxes was only 834, I believe.
So, leave that at 175, Joe, is what you're saying?
Well, if we do, then I got... Then, then it messes up how Byron can spend the money.
Right.
Oh, so you wanted it 110 is what you're saying?
You wanted it at 110, and carryover goes directly into the paving part of it.
If not, then I pull a couple streets off the paving.
I got it.
Yeah, so it's better to leave it at the 110. I mean, it's not going to affect that drastic. It'll blow a little bit.
65K is 65K more to be raised. I mean, that's a lot of money. We don't have that luxury of the 175. We're down to 110, plus there's an increase on the budget, so we're talking...
Well, we'd have to look at, Josh, is not necessarily the increase on the budget, but the, the increase on the amount to be raised by taxes from one year to the next.
Yeah.
And that's going to be almost $100,000 more, which is...
Right, that's what I'm concerned about.
Which is, what, 2 cents?
Yeah, which is, I mean, is...
Uh, yeah, possibly.
Which we knew is...
But the overall budgets combined, everything together, we were down. You got to look at the bottom line. You can't go budget by budget. You got to go at the last number after all the budgets are in. The amount we were going to ask is going to be less. According to the figures that I had from our initial start, we were down, we were down like 7 percent overall across the board.
That's only because there's a lot of stuff that's not filled in. That's, that's a mirage right now.
Well, that was a mirage.
It's not going to be, that's not where we're going to be. That's a lot of money that we're going to be raising by taxes for the highway budget that we did in last year.
It's not a fat budget, though. It's pretty narrow, pretty thin, so I don't know how we avoid it.
Do you remember that we were using...
Pull Middle Road off the...
I don't think we should be pulling stuff off your schedule.
They need to get done.
That old saying, either pay me now or pay me later. And if you take it off now, and we do it in two years, technically, it's going to cost more, because the price of materials just keeps going up. It rarely goes down.
Yeah, the damage is going to be worse.
Yeah, the road's going to continue to degrade. It'll be more expensive.
And it just keeps going up. I mean, you just have to do what you have to. It doesn't always please us to spend additional money, but spend it in a timely fashion and in an organized fashion, you end up actually not costing the taxpayers more money.
So, can I call a question?
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, sir.
And the 4, oh, the 499 stays the same because it's not that, gotcha, okay.
Yeah, but it's a little, it's a little deceptive.
Well...
It's how much the budget went up and the amount by tax.
The carryover is, have we ever printed the carryover?
No.
And it's certainly not...
No, it's not.
It's not a shot at you, Byron. You do a beautiful job.
No, no, I understand that, but I've been...
It's a double-edged sword. You have a budget went up.
Figured it would take me three years to use that carryover up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and our auditor, our auditor has basically said, "Do that."
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Byron, thank you. Let's go to, let's go to fire next, please.
I'd move to approve the fire budget as presented.
Second. Motion by John Paul, seconded by Mary. For discussion. Gentlemen, chief, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Great. So, the fire, the fire committee met, and we went over the budget with a proposal of a 4.92 percent increase. Where do you want to start, Chris? What do you have to share with us?
Um, we'd like to change a line item name, if possible, where it says SCBA maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
We want to switch that to equipment testing.
No.
You see above, you have it typed in.
What's the number, 055?
28028.
For the reason of our air packs are brand-new, and they all have a 15-year warranty, and that's how long they last. So, we're not really going to have to spend any money out of that, so by changing it, we want to use that money for, like, ladder testing, hose testing, any kind of testing, so. Still the same amount of money, just different names.
Still the number, the account number.
Yes, yes.
Where were you taking that before? That was coming out of maintenance, wasn't it, before equipment maintenance?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hose testings.
So, any chance that the equipment maintenance could go down a little, or you're pretty comfortable, or do you think you need the extra 3?
I'm thinking we're in extra 3, just because I got a feeling engine 3 is going to have some more issues this coming year, and I just want to make sure we're covered.
Anything else?
If it makes, if it makes the rest of the board feel comfortable, and Chris and the assistant chiefs can attest, we probably are staring at about a 10 percent increase, and we took out the red marker in committee and made sure we got it under the 5 percent mark. You know, we really went line by line with Chris, as he did a great job, and our two assistants, so.
Call a question.
Any further questions before the question is called? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Chief, thank you.
Thank you.
Terrible grilling you took tonight.
It's too bad that he didn't have to present that before previous boards, right, Joe? When you were chief.
Those don't hurt.
All right, we've been through highway. We've been through, uh...
I'm going to break now.
Fire. Bill, somewhere this is going to be, this is going to be a finale page, right? Where we're going to see the final numbers, correct?
At least in the printed form.
On the screen, right?
Because we haven't filled in all the blanks.
All right, okay. All right, so let's continue on. Let's go to recreation, please.
Move to produce, approve as presented.
Second.
Second, but we should make him sit up here first.
All right.
Yeah.
He likes to sit next to me anyways.
Okay.
Because I could be his mom.
You could be my mom. No, we already have this discussion.
I could be, but he could be.
You could, but you would have been really young.
Motion has been made by John Paul, seconded by Mary. Now, we're in the discussion phase of the motion. Mike, how are you tonight?
I'm good. How are you guys?
Great. Thanks for putting your budget together. You and your committee met?
We have.
Okay, and we are, as proposed, as presented, looking at a 0.89 percent increase, less than 1 percent. Nice job there, Mike.
Thank you.
And committee?
And the committee, of course.
Yes.
Any special call-outs for your budget, Mike, that we should be aware of?
No, I think, I just juggled some things around like I typically do if I didn't spend or don't anticipate to spend, just like everyone else, and just reshuffled. There weren't any large increases to the best of my knowledge. I think it all pretty much stayed the same within a $1,000 jump from one to the other.
Yep.
Okay. Any questions for Mike in the budget?
Looks really good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Michael, thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to say the same, Bill. Let's move on to police, please.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve, seconded by Mary. For discussion at this point.
I know this went through the police committee, and so...
I have a few notes, so...
Do you?
Yeah, if there are any questions. But go ahead.
Yeah, no, I mean, it went through your committee, and it looks fine, so.
Yeah. Again, with Officer Sly's retirement, there is, if you look at the first officers, as school resource officer, that is a decrease.
Right.
Right, so, um, let's see if there's any others. Notes.
What do you guys?
3 percent increase across the board.
Yeah, well, that's for everybody.
Yeah, that's for everyone, and...
Do you have a question, Joe?
Yeah, I did have a question. At the committee level with the chief, did you guys consider the part-time officers' time as, you know, adding some to that, or doing a few extra hours? I mean, we get in a lot of interest, folks in the town that want to see the patrols and people on the street, and I didn't know if maybe Jim would want to work some more hours, and...
So, that, that was, given the current staffing, that was discussed with, within the second constable budget, with me picking up some more time to run rays.
Yeah, it, yeah, it was not put in here.
I, I realize that it wasn't. I just wondered if it was discussed and whether or not we should have, you know, because his hours were cut when we added the other full-time officer back in July 1st, so I was wondering if we should get back to the original status and try to get a little better presence out there.
I know that I had a conversation with Chief Dumas. I was not, I'm not on the committee, but one of the, well, his thoughts, one of his thoughts were, you know, doubling that overtime line. Some of that extra radar could be picked up out of the overtime budget.
Okay. I just, you know, we just really need to focus on visibility to...
Yes. Actually, we talked about that at our select board meeting on Tuesday.
Yeah, big deal.
And just to note, the health insurance, there's a fairly substantial increase there. That's probably the big increase of this budget.
Right, and that's everywhere.
Yep.
Call a question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This one passes. Sorry, Billy, just look at the last page for me. Do it again. Nothing's changed. Here, uh, $326,000 are going in the general. All right, let's go to the first page, the general budget. Kirsten, please come up to the table. How are you tonight?
Good evening.
How's the office coming?
Good.
All right. Okay, so for the first line that we left blank with social security, did you have a general idea, of course, on that?
I'm estimating we should leave it at 24.
Leave it at 24?
Yes. I went through all of the line items, and if nothing changes, then 24 will be sufficient.
Okay.
So, you're going to type along with us, Bill?
Yeah.
Okay. If you go down to, I guess I'll leave that one. So, that's an increase.
I did double-check the listers, my own, the assistant clerk's ledger, and the administrative assistant lines, and they are all at a 3 percent increase.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Why such an increase in the Board of Civil Authority, Kirsten?
We have a presidential election this year. Last, last time that we had this was 2016. We had an 80 percent turnout as a general election. We had a similar turnout for the town meeting day election, if I'm remembering correctly. We also have an August election, so we're definitely going to want to have a lot of increased people support for that. We're also going to need a lot of people who are able to count at night, and several meetings that we're going to need to be able to do.
Yeah. So, that brings us down to health officer. John, did you want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, that's just, again, kind of a shot in the dark until we get our footing under us as to what that position's going to entail. It's going to be exhausted at the current budget level before the end of this fiscal year, and one big investigation can eat through that, so I'm just giving it my best shot at what, next year, the town-wide public building report is due, and so that's, I'm told, anywhere from a 2 to, a 150 to 200-hour chore to get an index and to inspect and to generate the report, so that's why the increase is there. And I did try and break it out a little bit. Under health officer consultants, there's a lot of properties. I'm not qualified to determine whether or not they meet code. I'm talking about electrical issues, plumbing issues, some of the construction issues I know pretty well, but you need somebody. So, for example, I was called to do an inspection on a residential apartment in which the sills were being held up by pump jacks, so I needed to get somebody who knew about construction to come in and tell me why that wasn't appropriate, and we'd have to pay them. But again, that's, I'm just taking a guess at what we might get involved. Luckily, I didn't have any of that with the Holiday Inn, because Irving Gas was all over that, but if that was a situation where we would have to hire a consultant, you know, to tell us how to do that, we didn't have to, but we could be faced with that.
And then to, more to your point, Joe, about additional radar, we, you know, we've heard loud and clear that the town folk are looking for more radar and speed enforcement, and our second constable has, we've outfitted his vehicle appropriately for that. The discussion was that it made a lot of sense for him to pick up some of that additional roadwork.
And I think that, yeah, that figures more accurately 15 and not 20.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
No, cut it short.
No, I did an hourly analysis, and I, and because the board allows the health officer to supplement the constable, we have that flexibility, so that if I do run over in one, we have the other to back it up.
But you, you know, just make sure, because you're talking about, this starts July 1st of next year, when you have to do this big town-wide thing to make sure that you're not short. You know, like you said, we're only halfway into this year's budget, and you've almost exhausted it. So, I would prefer to leave it where it is. That would be...
All right.
Fire recommendation, but...
Twist your arm.
Yeah.
I think, I like 15.
Well, you would, but you'd like him to do it for free, or pay if he's willing to do it, but reality is reality.
I think the taxpayers will like 15 more as well.
Well, I don't hear them as much as I hear you.
Well, I'm glad one of us is looking out, you know, at the bottom line.
Yeah.
We all are, Josh, come on.
So, what are we leaving at? Are we leaving at 20 or 15?
1750. Cut you half.
I think we stay at 15. That's what John recommended. And I, I too think we have to look, look out for, if you feel we should go to 20, John, I would consider that. But if you think 15 will do it, I think...
I think I can live with 15, and I think I can get the services in at 15.
All right.
Okay. Anything further the board would like to talk about on page 1?
We skipped over office help.
Okay.
Go under.
So, office help is in the middle section of page 1.
153.
Kirsten had proposed again for an additional person for $18,000.
I'd love to pack it on everyone's desk. I'm looking at a additional person who would be more of a secretarial person at this point, someone that could pull from both my office and Bill's office to help with taking care of our town residents, so that we can focus our, our sights on, on taking care of other things that need to be taken care of that seem to be slipping through the cracks, at least through my office. And I was looking at $16 an hour, 20 hours a week. The figures that I gave you include FICA and MEDI.
What are the board's thoughts on that?
What's slipping?
There's a lot of things that were never really taken care of. I have a gigantic list of policies and procedures that I would like to get to that I've never gotten to. The state has been pushing down on us harder and harder. There's new forms that I have to fill out regarding the land records that they've now changed. I have to do that. They wanted me to do it weekly, and then they said we could do it monthly, based on what's coming in, what the fees are that we're collecting, how many pages we are filing, and this is not just for land records, it's also for the vital records, it's also for certain copies that we're making, for anything.
Who in the state? Because the, the money that...
The new law that went out with the, the land records.
There was an increase in funds per page, what, $15 a page now for recording instead of 10, so that's a significant increase.
And part of that law was that we now have to track every single fee that we collect, so that they can see at the end of the year what we're doing, and there's a breakdown sheet that I was given by the Town Clerks Association that... that is being used in every single town in Vermont. I know land records, um, I've been falling, falling behind on. I typically am able to try and find a day to set aside to work on them, um, but it's an all-day push, um, which sometimes means that I have to leave helping anybody to Susan, who hopefully isn't working on something else. We have no organization in the downstairs vault, um, that's suitable for, um, any catastrophic planning, from what I've talked to Marty about. I've been trying to spend time organizing when I have the ability, um, but I don't. The other thing that's been on my agenda is that, um, I have been trying to go to training so that I can make sure that I'm doing what I need to be doing, um, as a town clerk. Unfortunately, I did not have the ability to learn from the previous town clerk the way that many clerks have in the past. So I have had to learn pretty much on the fly, um, and by going to training, it helps me understand and, um, and better organize my office the way that it should be. In order to do that, I obviously have to, um, set aside other duties that need to be worked on, um, that I fall behind on.
What are the, what are the thoughts from the board members, please?
Well, there's no motion pending, is there?
Oh, yeah, you're right.
So what?
Because before, JP had made a motion to approve for the other budgets, but we don't have one here.
Well, we do have to have a discussion about it, so does anyone want to make a motion for the...
So I'd make a motion, we keep the off, office help line the way it is in the budget.
Second.
Motion by John Paul, seconded by Sharon, for discussion.
Your expenditure for office help was, in 2018, 2019, was so far a hundred and forty-seven dollars out of two thousand.
The person that I have that I can usually pull on was available for me to pull on.
Is that Mary?
That was Mary.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, having a two-thousand-dollar line item, it's very difficult to be able to have someone who's available when I need them to be available. I have tripled that as of right now, and I have more plans to bring Mary back coming up, specifically in January.
I, I do have some concern with the three-election year coming up, because that really does take a lot of extra time. And I know we've budgeted for it in other places, but...
None of that, though, is for stuff in the office, it's all for outside, very...
Yeah.
In 2016, I did put this in the packet that I had given to everyone. In 2016, we had five hundred and fifty absentee ballots that were cast just for the general election.
Yeah.
That is a fifth of the voters in the town. That takes a lot of time and a lot of effort. When, that was when I first started, so I literally did not learn anything in that office except for how to do absentee ballots for the first month that I was there.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna move to amend and increase that office help up to five thousand instead of two thousand. It's not what you want, but it's...
It's something, and I appreciate it.
But that doesn't mean people agree with me. Yeah. I guess...
Would you, John Paul, do you entertain amending your motion from two thousand, five thousand?
No.
So I need a second, or my motion dies.
Wow, I guess we got a vote on the first motion.
Motion on the first.
And then we can, we could entertain your motion.
And moving to, okay, so he didn't, whatever.
He made a motion, it was seconded by Sharon, so we have a motion on the floor, so I'll...
To do two thousand.
To do two thousand. So I'll call the question. All those in favor of John's motion of leaving it at two thousand, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes at two thousand. Okay. Any final discussion, uh, to talk about on page one?
Um, just, I think we talked about getting a second radar car, but that would come out of our sinking fund rather than anything on this, but, no, that'll, that's gonna come out of this year's, not next year's. Gotcha. Okay. Answered my own question.
That's good. We, we need one of those, those are very popular around town.
Mm-hmm.
We would do so.
Except for those who've gotten caught.
On to page two, everyone. Uh, Larry Dell. All the, um, you and Bill had done the, um, transfer station numbers together.
We had a, um, meeting at the transfer station on Wednesday.
Yeah.
Um, and the big change is in the recycling. We're gone from having been paid for recycling to now having to pay to get rid of our recyclables. Um, and, um, the, the men at the transfer station are comfortable that they can bring it in at that thirteen thousand dollar figure. And the only other thing they wanted to alert the board to is it's time to retire the coats that they have, the town coats for the transfer station, so they'll be getting some new parkers. But other than that, the budget is as presented there.
Time to recycle the what?
The parkers, yeah. They, they have, you know, the coats that they use up there, after a couple of years, they get pretty grungy.
I can imagine.
You're saying we supply them jackets?
Yes, we do.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
All right.
But that would be before the end of the year, this fiscal year anyway, so it's not next year's budget.
It's budgeted for next year.
Okay.
Right.
Uh, we didn't, maybe I missed, but we didn't adjust the attendance by three percent. Is that because we haven't been spending near that amount on attendance salaries?
No, that should, that should get the three percent line. Yep.
If you, but if you change it, but, um, Josh?
Yeah.
We budgeted twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
Or fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, it was twenty-five, they spent twenty-one, eight fifty-one.
Well, we gave Larry a little raise when he became manager, so...
Okay. Will that amount to...
I believe so.
More than four thousand dollars?
I believe so.
Probably for the bulk of them, yeah.
We're leaving Bill and Larry at, so I think we actually do have to move it, Joe.
I'm just, you know, we budget money that if we don't spend it...
I agree, but I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna get there. So that becomes twenty-six, five, twenty-two, fifty.
Why don't you make it at least a round number?
Okay. Five, twenty-three.
What'd you put up, Billy? Twenty-six, five, twenty-three? I was gonna say twenty-five, we could go on Neil Nichols, but...
Yeah, I was thinking that, too, but...
It's two dollars you'll find somewhere else to spend it, Joey.
But my point is that, well, anyway.
SWAC?
Staying the same, yeah.
New swath of building electricity. Kirsten, you're comfortable with these numbers, four, six, and five?
They look fine to me.
No, because the municipal office building heat...
Does that include, um, contracts for... We just did a changeover with the phone system. Is this still a good number for that?
Yes.
Okay.
The interesting one will be that meetings line, which is at sixty-five. That is largely due to Kirsten's office's renovation.
Yeah.
We've done select board, we've done listers, we've done Bill and the police, now we've done mostly outside. Done mostly outside, we're doing Kirsten's.
Yeah.
Could that number be at thirty thousand dollars?
We need to start talking about the downstairs and, at least the meeting room, but I agree it doesn't, sixty-five is, we don't have to have sixty-five.
I'd agree with thirty.
If you're looking at just spending, you know, to keep the building up for one year, and then we can come up with a plan as to what we want to do with the downstairs, or do we want to put a little in there so we could hire somebody to come in and give us some ideas?
Well, thirty will give you that flexibility.
I don't know, yeah, the only thing is JP is I don't know what we actually spent on building maintenance.
Oh, what's regular maintenance?
What's regular maintenance, yeah. Because that would be cleaning and...
What comes out of that, Kirsten?
Cleaning and stuff.
Anything comes out of it? Any maintenance, um, if we have to call, um, the heating company because there's a problem, we have to call the plumbing company because there's a problem.
Yeah, I think thirty's plenty.
Because it's been so long since we've had...
Yeah.
A year where we weren't doing something.
Something, making something.
I don't know what that actual figure is, but... I'd be okay with a thirty, and we'll see where it goes.
Okay.
Attorneys probably ought to stay the same.
What's professional services? Is that our audit?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now we're down to the attorney fees.
Keep that the same.
Eighty-five?
Yep.
Yeah.
We spent half of what we budgeted the year before.
Municipal retirement, Kirsten?
I would say fifteen-five, although, um, depending on how many hours JP's gonna be putting in, we may need to consider municipal retirement for him. Um, I think the threshold is twenty-four hours.
Yeah, no, I want you doing more than twenty-four.
Fifteen-five?
Fifteen-five, okay. Oh, stormwater.
That's a big price tag.
Yeah.
Stormwater.
So Andres gave us...
Quite a...
Estimate. So he broke it into, what, basically three categories and then one. MS four work, twenty-two thousand, five hundred. Ordinance work, which is three thousand. FRP, which is...
Flow restoration plant.
At twenty-eight thousand. And then select board meetings, twelve hundred. For a total of fifty-four, fifty-four thousand, seven hundred.
That FRP, Byron, is that something we have to do?
Yeah.
Yep.
You've got a twenty-year span on time?
Yeah, I mean, we're...
From when? From when?
Couple of years ago.
Last year?
Yeah.
So we got eighteen years more to...
We've done, you know, we've done the one project upon Hitzel Terrace, for the flow restoration plan.
So, so that twenty-eight grand, we don't have to add this year, Mary?
There's the retrofit on Windmere.
Windmere is thirteen thousand, and that's...
It shouldn't be too expensive, but...
Thirteen thousand he has in, yeah. And then Nancy Lane.
And there again, some of these you can, you can get ERP grants for, even though they're only fifty, fifty grants, they're, you know, anytime you can, like, borrow this one dollar and get another dollar.
Yeah. So, no, we don't have to do fifty-four thousand, seven hundred, um, but we should chip away at a couple of these, and if we can get grant money, Andres was good at finding grant money before for us.
Yeah, but that fifty-four thousand, is that included?
That's everything.
Actual construction on some things.
Oh, sorry. Um, it's the Windmere, it does include thirteen thousand for Windmere construction and engineering.
There is some stuff there, so that, yeah, we can get some ERP grants.
What, thirty-five thousand for that line?
Any of those, uh...
Move aside.
...grants and aids eligible for stormwater work on, on MS doors? Or do you remember?
There's not, there's not a lot of stormwater work per se.
Or, or thirty thousand. Thirty or thirty-five, huh?
I'd say thirty would be okay.
Thirty.
Thirty thousand, okay?
Yeah, I can...
The three thousand for the ordinance?
Yes.
Did he, did he put that in?
Uh, will require application submission in fiscal year 2020 for certain development projects. Watershed recommends including some budget for third-party review of applications to allow for staff to be trained on application review, so basically it's that.
Okay. So that's probably nothing to dispute in the planning commission budget.
Well, it's, I mean, you're in the general budget, too.
Right. Right, yeah, I'm just trying to compensate what extra expenses we have because of the ordinance, so it doesn't sound like it matters.
No, that, I'm wondering if that's more of a bill training thing, but, uh, yeah.
So thirty thousand for that line?
I think thirty will cover everything, and especially if Andres is successful in finding some grant money for us, as he has in the past.
Are you thinking on clerk treasurer training, Kirsten?
I'm thinking that I would be willing to put it towards another person in my office if you're looking down on it. However, I was hoping to get a little bit more training regarding, um, fiscal audit area, you know.
You think of twenty-five hundred dollars, does it?
For the training?
Yeah.
Twenty-five hundred dollars?
Two thousand listed for...
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the, yeah, so you put two thousand dollars, and there wasn't anything there last year?
No. We haven't had a line item before. I know typically I spend between six and eight hundred dollars a year. There's a forensic accounting class at, um, Cassleton that I've been looking at, which I believe is about four hundred dollars or more. I don't know how many, um, how many hours that is. It might be three hundred an hour, um, credit hour, I'm not sure. I wanted to get, um, some, some good classes in so that I can, um, do a better job as treasurer.
Or jump to a two thousand dollars for training?
Yeah.
Yep.
And that's for Susan as well? Okay.
Uh, clerk, let's go to mileage, clerk treasurer, select board, that all looks, okay. You putting for mileage, John?
Yeah, I broke that out of my budgets, both of them.
Page three, insurance. Huge increase.
That was last year's.
So what have we got?
Rated twenty, twenty-one.
I believe this year's was, what, a hundred and twelve?
It's going down?
For the, um, the VLCT insurance.
Yeah, we budgeted a hundred and twenty.
We budgeted a hundred and twenty. We expended ninety-seven, um, last year. This year, I believe it was a hundred and twelve. Should be listed in here.
That's what we spent, or that's what we should budget?
That's what we spent. It all depends on, um, this, this coming year, um, we may have, it may cost us more. Um, it's the passive line, wherever it is. It may cost us more because, um, we have an additional officer, um, which is one of the higher-risk, um, line items in our insurance, um, which typically costs more. Uh, yeah, it was about a hundred, it's, it was like a hundred and thirteen, but I think there's something else rolled into it, so...
Well, wait. In the police budget, we had, we put an increase in there. What's the difference between...
Passive is our, um, our, um, VLCT insurance, which is our liability insurance.
Oh, it's liability, okay, okay, gotcha.
And our workman's comp insurance, um, and insurance of all of our buildings. The health insurance line is where our Blue Cross Blue Shield and Northeast Health come out of.
Okay, but...
The police should have had an increase for their health insurance.
Right, we did.
Yes.
But, so the line that we're looking for here is not excluding, it's excluding police, excluding...
Not for, um, VLCT. VLCT is all taken out of the general budget.
Right, but that's the two thirty, line two thirty-one, just the first line.
Yeah.
The second line, who, who is that for?
Myself, Susan, and Bill.
Gotcha.
We all have families.
Okay.
It's really expensive. Howard also gets dental on that.
So for the first box on general insurance, what's the board feeling as you do, based on what we've learned?
Well, it's costing us a hundred and twelve out of this budget. Next year, it's not gonna be less, so one-twenty might be enough, but you, it's an increase of eight if you stayed with the same. If you stayed with the same number. But I don't know if that'll be enough because
Do they give you any, I'm sorry?
There's a big
They give us a general
Let's say one-twenty-five for that.
But then they have their audit in April, so there could be additional
It's going to be a big increase this year.
Yeah.
One-twenty-five?
Um, well, I'm talking about health, I'm sorry.
Oh.
I'm not talking about general.
Okay, so what do we, let's start with general.
Yeah, general
General insurance, one-twenty-five?
No, general can stay at one-twenty.
Okay.
But the health insurance should probably go up to a hundred and ten.
You think it'll go that high?
That's what they're predicting.
They're predicting.
Okay, the, the information that we got from Blue Cross didn't seem like it was going to go that high, but
And they can't give you a solid answer.
That's true.
They're really whacking schools this year, too.
Well, so one-twenty and one-ten for the first two boxes.
Okay.
New equipment down in seven, that's great. Paramedics, advertising, stay the same. Planning Commission. Barbara, do you have those numbers with you?
Um, I would suggest the same numbers.
Okay.
Especially since you're giving the ordinance and we have some more advertising, more consulting from Watershed on that. And so far this year, we're pretty much on track.
Okay.
Shouldn't our computer service cost be going down, Bill? We've got all new computers now?
We, that was part of the discussion, we had to make up our current year's expenditures. We've had we can, we can try it at three. We have having some issues, so we've been working to reduce the number, had to get them there and combine trips, but we've had some things happen that we weren't anticipating, so.
What, with the new computers?
My printer just died.
Yeah.
It was just the printer that I use to print taxes.
One at a time, please, whoa, 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 I can only listen to one at a time. Go ahead.
Not necessarily related to the new equipment, it's a lot more to do with the old. We've had one computer that's been sent out for repair twice, and it just takes time to do all that.
So we don't have all new computers? I thought we had all new computers.
We, we didn't. There's a new server for the building, and starting this current fiscal year, we have started a replacement cycle. So now we're going to cycle through two computers a year, where before it was just, oh, it's completely dead, now we're going to replace it. Now we have a schedule for that, so that's why it was six a while ago, because they were there doing a lot of work, we were able to get that down, but I think based upon last year's and this year's, what we're spending this year, that's probably the appropriate number.
All right.
Can we go back up to miscellaneous, miscellaneous expenses? Is that where the circle costs are?
This is under, we're still under the planning
Sorry, whoa, that's weird, but, okay.
There's a miscellaneous, there's a couple of different miscellaneous expense lines.
Okay.
But that one is under the planning commission.
I'm confused, that's what you're talking about?
Oh-three-five-two-six-four is the one that you're talking about, right?
No.
No?
We're down.
No, I'm down, too, because you guys skipped down to computer service, which is
Oh, okay.
So I'm looking at two-seven-five, miscellaneous expense.
Uh, two-seven-five, um, hang on, I think that's the one that the, that miscellaneous contributions, which is zero-five-six-three-three on the next page, that's where the circle comes out of. The miscellaneous expense line is used for the majority by the Select Board for things like sending flowers or baskets, or if there's anything that you want to contribute to.
Okay. Thank you.
What did that letter say, Mary, about taxes?
Taxes. All right. Okay. Well, they're building their budget, so. No, no, because they were going to, they wanted to put solar panels on the sheriff's roof. So I'm trying to cut to the chase here. Okay. They don't do it by percentage, and of course they do it total reg, no, I can't do it because it's, there are several different categories, so.
Um, if we're talking about county taxes right now?
We are.
This year we have spent sixty-seven thousand in county taxes.
Yeah.
Almost sixty-eight thousand, so if there is, say, a five percent increase, we'll be right at that seventy, possibly over.
So we might be okay, well?
Five percent increase would be seventy-one.
It's been at seventy for several budgets, it was expenditures in eighteen-nineteen was sixty-five-seven-seven-two. They're running at about seventy thousand this year?
Uh, they're running, this year we're at sixty-eight.
Okay. You want to do like seventy-two?
Seventy-two?
It looks like last year was a five percent increase, just looking at what we expend the last year versus this year, it was about a five percent increase.
Okay. Everyone comfortable with seventy-two?
No.
How about Nemrick?
Nemrick has given, has sent us a letter that said that our fees are going to go up to five thousand this year. And the, the seven thousand we put on there because we typically have about a two thousand dollar buffer for any webinars or trainings that both the listers and myself go to.
Okay, well, some of that couldn't come out of the new training line that we came up with, or?
That's a pretty good.
Yeah, it's a, it's a pretty big increase.
We might be able to function on, um
They really hammered this.
Well, then you'd have thirty-five hundred in training in total on the two line items, when you didn't
Well, no, because this also includes the listers. Listers go to more Nemrick trainings than I do. So if we cut a thousand dollars out of that, and then I absorb it into the new line item that we created, then that leaves about fifteen hundred dollars for any overflow, if there's any, any help that we need to have to bring Nemrick in. They run about ninety-two dollars an hour, and we have to bring them in for help. And then there would be room still for training for the listers.
I'm not seeing, I'm, I'm not hearing twenty-five hundred dollars in that.
What did you tell us the fees are going to be, Kirsten?
Five thousand.
Is there another company besides Nemrick?
Not at this point.
Yeah, I guess sixty-five, I could live at sixty-five.
Sixty-five. Nothing else to really speak of on that page unless anyone sees something to talk about?
Did anybody check with Marty on the?
Yes.
Okay. And the generator maintenance, that's, okay. Oh, yeah.
Oh, there's some good news?
Yeah, just zero out Chaney Hill because we don't own it anymore. The seniors, I, what did Jim tell me? Ah, I don't have the note, but it, I doubt if they were looking for an increase. Do we leave them at a thousand or go to fifteen hundred? That's, those are the only two numbers.
A thousand, then we have the four thousand are miscellaneous if they ever came to us and said
Yeah, I, that's fine. And landscaping was for Chaney Hill, and we don't do that, so.
Where are we at, Bill?
Wait, miscellaneous contributions, that's where the circle is, right?
Oh, yeah, I already know.
Okay, right, yeah.
So, I, I was wanting to float by the board that we'll put an additional twenty-five hundred dollars in there.
Yes.
And the twenty-five hundred dollars would be the, sort of the carrot for the compensation for the next circle publisher. Everyone think that's fair?
Yeah, that's good.
Forty-five hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah. And can we change that from miscellaneous contributions to the circle?
It's not just the circle, though, there have been other things that we've pulled it out of, that's why we have it listed as miscellaneous contributions.
Why don't we put circle and miscellaneous?
Right.
Can you, can we do that?
Or miscellaneous plus circle?
Is that all right?
Yeah, something like that, so we know where it is, because we have to guess every year.
And I did have, I have not had a conversation with the principals about the circle, but I did have a conversation with Carol, and she believes that it's going to be we're going down the correct path with what we're doing, you know, with budgeting through the circle and also managing it, so.
Can we take that traffic study line out now? How many years do we have to run it?
Three, right?
So I think we can, right?
Yeah, because we haven't done a traffic study, and I've been here almost four.
There are a couple of lines that have been zeros for three years. I wasn't sure if we should take them out for when we put it to the voters or not. One of them was the Assistant Town Admin line.
Has it been three years?
We also have, um
It hasn't been three years since Patty's been here.
We didn't budget anything for twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, and that's the last one that's on this list.
Well, we can leave it on one more year, because, yeah.
The Wage and Salary Adjustment Line is another one.
Oh, that, huh.
Has that been three years?
Since we put it in, when we actually got around to
Since we zeroed it out, I don't think it's been three years since, has it, since we zeroed?
There's nothing on the, on the budget sheet for it, it's all zeros.
I think we'd better leave that off for one more year.
Yeah, I think you're right.
And then Chaney Hill.
Yeah, we just turned that over to the school, what, a year and a half ago?
Yeah, that's got to stay on for a while.
That's a five percent increase, Bill. What's the grand total on the total page? Be really nice to get that under four percent.
The anticipated one percent tax can probably be bumped up to one-point-one million.
Hmm.
We were at, we were at one-point-one-eight last year, and we're looking pretty strong so far.
That quarterly payment was strong.
I know, but we're looking
Looking at the mall going.
Six months from now, and then a year and a half.
Yeah, but the mall didn't contribute anything to the one percent.
Very okay.
Very little, because most of what was sold at the mall or whatever was in tax.
Haircuts and shoes.
Stuff like that, the only place you got anything out of the mall was the, whatever it was.
What if we say a million fifty, so it gets under the four percent?
The only thing I think of that would have made it really significant change
At fifty grand?
That's what we're doing.
But, I mean
I just don't like that.
No?
I just have a bad feeling about that.
I think it was a million fifty.
You heard him, huh?
We're bringing in the money, I mean
Well, I, you know, I
If you change that to
Put fifty grand in there and see what that does. Just, just for, just fifty, just to see what it looks like.
It's consistent with what's come in this year, it's just projecting beyond that.
Or does that going to change the budget? You have to cut the budget in order to change the four-point-one percent, you can't change the income. The amount to be raised by taxes is what changes.
Right, which is
So if you want to get rid of that point
What is, yeah, what is a point one-zero on the budget we can draw?
And I can't think of much, because I thought we cut this pretty bad now, so.
I'm, I'm ready to go through it again.
Here's a question, anticipated income, we had an increase in town clerk's fees.
Yeah, but that doesn't affect our in percentage increase.
No, let's see.
It went up to fifteen, well, four dollars of that is now set aside in a special fund specifically for record restoration.
For what?
For records restoration.
Do we hold it, or does the state?
We hold it, but we can't, we can't
It has to be for records restoration. Does that reduce any of our other, like the microfilming, which is a thousand, I mean, it's not much, but
It could be used for microfilming if we wanted to do it that way.
What was, um
What does a point one percent equal in, in dollars?
Twenty-eight hundred or twenty-eight thousand?
Twenty-eight hundred? Let's reduce attorneys to thirty thousand.
Twenty-five hundred dollars we just added to the circle.
Do you want to keep it going?
I just
Want to publish it?
Take, take five grand off the attorney's line, what does that do for us? Look at that.
Go to what on that?
Starve the sharks until we get under four percent?
Let me, let me just say one thing about, not that I'm defending attorney's fees, but we've not only got this pending action concerning the railroad, but we've, we're closing, and this is the, the year in which we're going to have to do something about the fire station. To resolve the final issues concerning the things that weren't done correctly in the new building. And that would be attorney's fee stuff.
Yeah, I know, but we're only we've only spent seventeen thousand dollars.
We spent seventeen-five last year, we budgeted thirty.
And we were going pretty hard on those things.
Yes, the railroad comes out of the water and sewer account.
Because that's, yeah, because that's
Because it's water and sewer.
This year we've spent four thousand dollars on attorney's fees.
All right, I think maybe you have a point there, just this once.
I could go with the, I could go with the thirty.
So if we reduce that to thirty, then we're good.
Okay.
I'd move to approve.
I'd like to, I'd like to just go back and for a moment here entertain the clerk treasurer request for a little more office help, and the reason I've been sitting here thinking about it is there are three elections coming, and it's also a position, you know, and I, I would think, you know, even, and it's not going to please Kirsten, but if you went from two to four, it's also someone who could help out during Bill's vacations, because Bill takes, what do you take?
I have two weeks right now.
And it's increasing some, and so that office is completely shut down, unless, you know, I've been spending a little bit of time there during Bill's vacations, but it's, it's not much, but if the board would consider four, I could support it, and I know I broke the tie on, you know, the five. But I was just thinking about, you know, the two and a half weeks Billy's going to be gone, you know, that office shouldn't be without someone from ten to two or something like that to at least answer the phone. So if the board would consider it, I would be comfortable with four, it's certainly not what you wanted, but it's a little more flexibility.
I got a question, Kirsten, the cleaning and normal maintenance on this, on this building, does that run two thousand a month?
I would have to look at the bill, I can't remember. I know that it's
Two thousand a month?
Well, I want to know, because I would, I was thinking of what you're thinking, Josh, is that we don't know how much to put down in maintenance. We put down thirty thousand for maintenance, and that's covering basically just cleaning and, and if a window fell out or something. We don't have anything going, so I'd be willing to discuss cutting We don't have anything going, so I'd be willing to discuss cutting that to twenty-five and then putting a little... Putting the extra four or five in of the office help. Be about the same number, and we wouldn't change the bottom line. But I need to know what the month-to-month expenses are for maintenance on that building.
I want to say it's... I think it's eight hundred.
Eight hundred a month?
Yeah.
The cleaning.
Two hundred a week, roughly.
So that's ten grand we pay in cleaning.
Approximately. Yeah, we have talked about putting that out to bid again, but...
I mean, I can't think of anything else we would spend. I mean, if, you know, somebody has to come in and do a little bit of wiring or replace light fixture or stuff like that, but other than that, there's... You know, would require, you know, any service on the boilers or maintenance, so I don't know if we could get by on twenty-five or not, because it's been so long since we haven't had a build... I said, a project, but that would be a compromise that I thought would work. I was trying to think of something where we could cut a little and add a little somewhere else.
Well, we could... I mean, we could even go to...
If it was something major, we'd be going into the capital.
Right. I mean, if a boiler fails, then we'll have to buy one.
Yeah, we could even go to twenty-eight on that and just shift the four, the two grand up to the...
Yeah, I was thinking of putting a little more than two in there. I was thinking of trying to get it up to five or six, but... And just see where that goes.
Is there any support for this idea from the two descending votes?
So, wait, which are we on? Office help?
We're on office.
I'm fine with four. Four thousand.
I'm really thinking the weeks that, you know, Billy's on vacation, we have nobody. I've had to build the packets and...
And you've done a fine job, Josh.
I would like to say I've done a split of job, but I haven't.
Yeah.
And so it's just a utility player, you know, not... They don't require help benefits. I mean, this is a three hundred dollars. They worked five, you know, get three hundred dollars a week, you know?
If you're worried about Billy, it should go in on one, three, seven.
Well, I mean, I like the idea that they could be shared amongst, you know, when... If it's an election week, Kirsten could pull from it. Billy could pull from it when he's on vacation.
General office help.
You know, I hate to fill that line back up, John. I, you know, I just think it could be...
Boy, you fill another line the same way. What difference does it make?
Yeah, this one's gonna fall off, and it's not a true assistant town.
Right.
Would be a general office help. You could just put it on, and then it could be a shared person. Depending on if something... Make that one five, make the other one twenty-seven, and move on.
Wait, wait. Why did you say five?
Because I think it's a better number.
I said four. He jumped me a thousand.
And I'm not even sitting next to him.
Yeah. But... And then the bottom line stays the same.
All right.
So we're office helps at two.
Well, I'd support four.
I'd go to four.
We got another one for four? I move that we go to four on office help.
Four on office help, and that reduces maintenance to twenty-eight instead of thirty.
Yeah.
So we're just shifting numbers. Mary made a motion, and they're second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Joe.
Okay.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
All right. And then the attorney fees was the other one. We changed to thirty, right? Went to thirty. That was on page one, though, yeah.
Attorney's fees, thirty, yeah.
Page two. Page two, sorry. So that changed to that, and that got us down to four fifty. No, should be less.
This is all the budgets, right, Bill?
Yeah.
General budget, one, two, three, four, five. Gets you a three point nine two percent.
Which is spelled cost of living.
And that gets you a total increase in dollars of... Hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Can't we lose that six bucks somewhere to make that an even number?
No.
That's your two, three dollars.
Because it looks... It looks way more honest this way.
There you go.
Six, six, six is an unlucky number, though. So a hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars is the grand total increase year-over-year at a three point nine two percent.
What I'd like to know, and I don't know, and we don't have that from past years, but the amount to be raised by taxes this year is one million, four hundred and fourteen, eight, six, six. Do you know what it was last year? It would have been...
Would be a ten or four.
No, I think so.
I know that the income has changed. Eighty-four percent only went up by fifty thousand, so it's last year's number.
Yeah, but you can't, because Byron's budget is...
I'd just be curious as to how we have compared the amount to be raised by taxes from this budget, proposed budgets, to the budgets last year when we proposed them.
Right. So did we increase the income that we were expecting at all?
We decreased the income by sixty-five thousand in highway.
So...
That still doesn't matter. Doesn't... It's the amount to be raised by taxes.
It's gonna be raised by taxes.
Is the amount. It's... Doesn't matter what numbers we juggled where. I just want to know how that compares.
So last year, it looks like our anticipated income that we were discussing was one million, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and forty, including the one percent tax. So if we take the amount that we had on our budget last year, which was two thousand, seven hundred and forty-six... Or two million, seven hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and forty dollars, minus the one million, three hundred and ninety-five number. So it looks like last year, our amount to be raised by taxes was one million, three hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred dollars.
So we went up about sixty-four thousand?
What was your... I'm sorry. What was your number, Kirsten?
I gotta make it again.
Okay.
One, three, five, something.
So one, three, five, zero, seven, zero, zero is what we were raising by taxes last year.
One, three, five, zero.
Five, zero, seven, zero, zero. So one, four, one, four, eight, six, six, minus one, three, five, zero, seven, zero, zero. So about sixty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars.
It's not...
Terrible.
No, I don't... But I don't know if it's right.
You know? We'd have to have the actual numbers.
Yeah.
We're guessing here.
Because we just... We increased Byron's budget by five percent, and we also, on the other hand, have to make up for sixty-five thousand dollars less in income in that budget alone.
Well, that amount would be in the town report. That page goes in the town report.
You follow what I'm saying, Byron?
Mary, can I see your town report?
Yeah, that's about what we're...
We lost income and increased the budget, so there's a bigger gap between the two. And we only increased the one percent by fifty thousand. That doesn't cover the sixty-five we lost from Byron's budget, so it's still fifteen...
But we went up sixty-five, Josh, on the amount to be raised by taxes, which is almost the exact amount that...
But the budget's a hundred and seven thousand dollars more.
Right, but some others might be down.
So last...
A little bit.
Last year, according to the town report, the total town budget, we had to be raised by taxes, one million, two hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred dollars.
What's that number again?
One million, two hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred dollars. So one, two, nine, two, two, zero, zero.
All right, sure.
This year's one, four.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that sounds better.
That's... That's what I was...
That makes more sense to me. One, four, one, four.
That's the only number that counts.
Eight, six, six.
So it's one hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars.
One twenty-two, six, sixty-six. And that makes... That exactly makes up the fifteen thousand dollar... We lost sixty-five from highway. We increased it by fifty. That's fifteen thousand dollar difference between one, two, two... Yeah, there you go. So... Final thoughts?
Did we approve this budget? We didn't approve the general budget, have we?
There's a motion pending.
Motion's pending to approve the general budget.
That's altered.
Yes.
As amended.
As amended.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And how about a motion to approve all five budgets in one swoop?
As in the last page, so moved.
Motion by Mary. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Joe. For discussion. Bill, you'll email this all out to us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Is there any further business coming for the select board tonight? If not, a motion to adjourn is in...
Second.
Joe, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good night.